Welcome to the May 25th, 2023 Parma City School District Board of Education Special Work Session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mr. Kreis. Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mrs. Schwart. Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Unless there is an objection, we will dispense with the reading of the special meeting notice. Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor livestreaming throughout the public portion of this meeting? If there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that a technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Thanks. As a reminder, work sessions are held at the Board of Education to provide its members with an opportunity to discuss matters. Community members are welcome and encouraged to attend. However, they are not permitted to participate unless the board specifically asks for input. So today, we have been listening to several people discuss the, an alternative way to fund schools. So right now, it's property tax, and that's what funds our schools. So we wanted to think, discuss an optional, not optional, yeah, I was right, optional way, and that is income tax. And we have today, Mr. Manilov, correct, Dr. Smiley?
It's correct.
And so we'll go with that. So the floor is yours, Mr. Manilov. Thank you for coming.
Might I say, we're lucky to have Mr. Manilov squeeze us in before he departs for his next job, which is actually as the Law Director of Cuyahoga County. So it's very grateful for his work with us and wish him the best in his next step.
Thank you. This may well be my little last presentation, I guess, for any Board of Education. So it comes full circle. I remember being out here in Parma maybe 20 years ago. So anyway, thank you for inviting me. I appreciate it. And I'm here to talk about levy options, including school district income taxes and different kinds of property tax options that you might have available to you as well. What I handed out is on a yellow piece of paper, you're used to my one-pagers, my desk references, is kind of an overview, one-page overview of that what you might well want to know going into this discussion. It sets the context for the discussion and lists some of the options that we're going to be discussing. First off, let's just go to the millage currently being levied. That establishes the context. You have, you have voted current expense levies at 46.5 mils. House Bill 920 has whittled down the effective millage down to 19.02 for ResAg for this collection year. Those are current expense levies that were voted and are in place for a continuing period of time. Then you have four emergency levies listed there on item 2A, B, C, and D. And you have, you have a couple of them that have been renewed for 10 years through 2030 and 2031. The one that's, that's coming up, that's, that's on the radar screen is the 7,603,000. That's currently at 3.1 mils. That's a 10-year emergency levy. The last collection year is, is next year. And so, so that one is, is up for renewal at this point. And then off in the horizon just a little bit is an 8,062,500 emergency levy, currently at 3.3 mils. And the last collection year of that is 2027. You have inside millage of 5.1 mils, total operating. You're not close to the 20-mil floor. You're at 40.72 effective mils.
But that 40.72 includes the emergency levies, which are not part of the 20-mil floor, correct?
That's, that's correct. Yeah, that's, that's right. That's right. So, and that, and the voted emergency levies is 16.6, as you can see on the page. So the four of them total 16.6 mils. So Sean is absolutely correct. The 40.72 includes all of the above, including inside millage. So you're not at the 20-mil floor, but Sean, you're getting close, right?
Yeah, we're about 24 right now.
Yeah. You got the 19.02, plus you have the 5.1 of inside millage. So we're, you're getting close to the 20-mil floor. And that's an important, an important point to bring up. On the permanent improvement side, you have three mils in place for a continuing period of time, and it's currently at 2.17 after the application of reduction factors under House Bill 920. And so the total for all purposes is 42.89 mils, for permanent improvements and operating of all types. So with that as the context, the important context, we can then talk about the, the options that you have available to you. We'll start with the property tax options that you have available to you, and then we'll go, get into the income tax option. So on the property tax options, you have two, two basic ways to proceed to the ballot for new property tax millage. You can go with a current expense levy, and that's a millage-based levy. So, and you guys have done that in the past. And so that would be a levy for the purpose of current expenses of the Parma City School District at a rate not to exceed fill-in-the-blank mils. And, and then you would levy, that would be subject to House Bill 920, and it would be included in the 20-mil floor calculation, back to Sean's earlier point. And, and so that's a very plain vanilla, basic way that school districts in the state of Ohio get operating money. And that's an option for you. And then there's also another option. There's a, there's a replacement levy option. Not too many school districts throughout the state of Ohio pursue that particular option, but the concept there, we talked about House Bill 920, that reduces the effective millage after the passage of a levy over time to try to protect taxpayers from increases in taxation due to reappraisal growth in their property. So a replacement would take the, the effective millage back up to what the voters voted, voted at. So for instance, if you were to pass a 4.9-mil current expense levy, and over time, that 4.9 gets whittled down to two mils effective millage due to increases in assessed valuation due to simply reappraisal growth, not due to new construction or anything like that. Well, a replacement levy would take you back from two up to 4.9. So a replacement levy would be a tax increase. But it would be billed as a replacement levy. And again, not too many Boards of Education will pursue that. Under certain circumstances, some do, but right now, it's, there's a question mark as to whether that particular kind of levy will survive the budget bill. The last, last I looked in April, it was, it was going to be eliminated in the budget bill. Of course, there's, who knows what's going to actually happen once the dust settles by the end of June? Will it be in? Will it be out? I'm not going to speculate on that. There's been legislation that I have actually fought against to eliminate replacement levies. I just thought it's good to have as many arrows in the quiver as possible for school districts so that they can, they can pick one of the arrows that best suits their particular context and situation. That's why I argued against its elimination, but it's, but it's always been a, a subject of elimination down in Columbus. And it, and it still is. So, so the concept is it would undo the effects of House Bill 920, and it would be a tax increase. And some of the considerations, why do, why don't school boards do that more? A lot of school boards are afraid that, that there would be some, a misperception, that, that people would interpret replacement as renewal, and, and that folks would think that there's, it's not an increase in taxes, when in fact, that's the whole point. It is an increase in taxes. And so some of the criticisms from the, from around the state that have led to the call for the elimination of the replacement levy are, you're trying to, you know, you Boards of Education who are doing this are trying to pull the wool over our eyes, that, that you're trying to sneak this through, you're, you're trying to pretend like it's a, it's not a tax increase, but in fact, that's what it's all about. Because replacement sounds like renewal. It kind of has the same kind of, you know, sense of the word. So anyway, that's, these are just kind of pros and cons and considerations. And this is what's going on around the state and down in Columbus. But if we're discussing options, that's an option. So you can propose a replacement levy or a, an additional plain vanilla current expense levy. However, as Sean has pointed out, because we're nearing the 20-mil floor, most school districts that are, who are at or near the 20-mil floor will pursue an emergency levy. And you have four of those. And I use the word emergency levy to describe basically any dollar-based levy. I refer to the current expense levies as a millage-based levy. So it would be not to exceed 4.9 mils. The dollar-based levy could be either for the emergency requirements of the Parma City School District, or it could be to avoid an operating deficit. In either case, it's a dollar-based levy. You would, you would ask the voters to, to approve the levy of mils from year to year in order to hit a certain dollar target for either the purpose of the emergency requirements of the Parma City School District or to avoid an operating deficit. And you have the, you have the choice of which purpose you want to go with. Brooklyn Schools, just down the road, you know, they like to use to avoid an operating deficit. Other school districts, Perry Schools and others like to use emergency requirements. So it, but they're both a dollar-based levy. And you have four of those. I feel it's, it's a little odd. My colleague, Mike Sharpe, and I have talked about this in the past. It's a little odd to renew a quote-unquote "emergency levy" for a million years. You know, in what sense is this an emergency? The, the language is, is a little odd. But, but everybody knows in the state of Ohio what an emergency levy is. It's just kind of, it's used as a term of art for a dollar-based levy. And certainly, the folks in Parma CSD know what one is. You've passed four, including a couple of recent renewals for 10 years. So as we're thinking about options on the property tax side, because you have all of these emergency levies, you can, you can combine a couple of them, or two or more, into one combination renewal of an emergency levy. Like Garfield Heights, they had, they had three emergency levies, and they decided that they didn't want to keep going on the ballot all the time. And so they did two things. They, they combined two of them into one, and then they also increased the duration of the, of the tax from five years to 10 years. And that, that gave the districts some breathing room between renewal requests. And that's an option for, for you guys as well. Upside is you reduce ballot fatigue by combining two or more. Downside is that the millage starts to get, get higher that's on the ballot. So instead of having, for instance, 3.1 mils show up on the ballot related to the $7.6 million emergency levy, if you combine that one with the 8-million one, now all of a sudden, you're talking 6.4 mils that would be on the ballot. So it's, it's still a renewal. It's not necessarily an increase in, in taxes as far as that goes, as far as the renewals go. But the, but the millage that's actually stated on the ballot is higher. So that's a possibility there. And so that's, that's, that's one there. And then the next one is a substitute levy. And because you have four emergency levies in place, you can pursue what's called a substitute levy. My colleague, Mike Sharpe, sitting down there, actually drafted that legislation that now a lot of school districts statewide are using. The concept there is to take a, a given emergency levy, and you have to have a dollar-based levy in place like an emergency levy, and swap that out for a levy that will do a few things. One is that it will produce more revenue to the school district if there is an increase in assessed valuation due to new construction. Currently with an emergency levy, if that, if that happens, if you have a big, huge commercial development or something like that, the, you're not going to get any new, new revenue from that if you have an emergency levy. But if you have a substitute levy, to the extent there's new construction added to the tax list and duplicate, then you will get the millage that's applied to all the carryover times the new, the new construction value. And there will be more revenue coming into the district as a result. And so, and that becomes the new floor. Your revenue, annual revenue ratchets up from year to year, and you could never go below that amount. So that's another neat feature of the, of the Mike Sharp substitute levy. Another feature is that you could go out for a continuing period of time, unlike emergency levies, which can only go out 10 years. So there's that piece of it as well. And it's, it's an option to you. And it's, and also you can, just like as I was mentioning, you can combine for purposes of renewal, two or more emergency levies. You can likewise combine various emergency levies into one substitute levy. And I could pick any school district out in Lorain County. I think Avon did four or five. Avon Lake did four or five. Sheffield, Sheffield Lake did, I think, three. So, and combined all of those emergency levies into one substitute levy. So they're starting to pop like popcorn, particularly out in, in areas where, where growth is expected, either housing developments or commercial developments or both. So that's, that's an option to you. It's not going to get you a lot of new money right out of the gate. The first year of the tax is going to produce the same amount of revenue as, as the emergency levy that it's substituting for. But then, as you go on, if there's new construction, you can get more money. And then, of course, so that's all, that's renewal. That's a combination substitute. But of course, you know, you could pursue another standalone emergency levy if you wanted to raise more money since you're getting close to the 20-mil floor. That would be an option that a lot of school boards would seriously consider. Or you could take the next renewal levy and renew an increase, that particular levy, in order to gain more money. You take that $7.6 million emergency levy that you currently have in place, and in one ballot question, renew that emergency levy and increase it to, to whatever amount that you think is, is necessary. And the question that might arise, well, Rick, we get, we get state subsidies from the, do you get state subsidies, Sean, from the $7.6 million?
Are you talking Homestead rollback?
Homestead and rollback, yes.
We do.
Yeah, okay. So it's, you go back far enough. The original approval by the, the electors of the school district goes back far enough that you pick up Homestead and rollback, the state subsidies associated with that particular levy. You wouldn't lose those if you had an, if you had a renewal and an increase. Those would remain for the renewal portion of the renewal and increase, but as to the increased portion of the emergency levy, you would not receive the state subsidies, the Homestead and rollback for the new piece. They would be treated behind the scenes on the state's books as two separate levies, but they would be voted on as one, a renewal and an increase. So on the property tax front, that's, that's your, you know, there, yeah, I could, we could go on, and we have, going on for hours and hours about different nuances and then different other, other subspecific types of levies to raise operating money. But those, these are the basics, and I talked to Charlie and Sean, and, and these are the ones that we really wanted to, to focus on. And I want to pause here and, and give, give everyone an opportunity to ask any questions and kind of, you know, ping pong this back and forth a little bit.
Okay. So a quick question, and for people who may not know, what is the 20-mil floor that you speak of? Just to explain it to the folks up in video land there.
So the, basically, the state law will, on, on the property tax side of things, will guarantee that, that despite all of the, the reduction factors that are reducing the effective millage out there, you'll never go below 20 mils. And so, you know, what's, what's an example of the, I keep talking about the House Bill 920 reduction factors. You know, a quick review there, 30-second review of that, because it's important in answering this question about the 20-mil floor. So if you had, let's say you had a four, four-mil levy, and, and it, that four-mil levy generated, just for ease of mathematics, a million dollars. And that's what the voters approved, four-mil current expense levy. It generated a million dollars. Now, let's say that there was a revaluation of all of the property in this, in the school district. And re-secennial reappraisal, the triennial readjustment of, of tax valuation. So due to, not new construction, just people's property values went up. Are, are people in the state of Ohio going to, going to pay, let's say they went up, they doubled, for, again, for ease of math. Let's say the property tax has doubled. It's just in a wonderful market for homeowners. Their property values are doubling. So they doubled. Would, would the property taxpayers then pay twice as much money to Parma City Schools? Would you get $2 million now because everybody's property taxed?
I sure wish that was the case.
Unfortunately for you, fortunately for the taxpayers, that is not the case. You still receive a million dollars in my example. But you're still going to be levying technically on your, on the board resolutions, accepting the rates from Brian Dunn at the, at the county. You're going to see four mils, in my example. You're going to see even four mils that you're going to approve, but four mils times that new assessed valuation that has just doubled is going to get you $2 million. Wait a minute, Rick, what's going on here? Ah ha! That's where these reduction factors come into play. So you levy four mils, and then the state government says, hmm, uh-uh. House Bill 920 kicks in. We're going to apply a 50% reduction factor, .5. And so your effective millage is going to go from four mils to two. So now, all of a sudden, the difference between four mils and two mils, that's the effect of House Bill 920. And now tying it back to the 20-mil floor, you know, let's say that, that you, you were at 20, 23, to make it an easier, yeah, let's say you were at 21 mils or something like that, and that, and that example arose. Would you, would you be reduced from 21 mils down to 19 by the application of this 50% reduction factor, taking you from four mils to two? Would you? No, you wouldn't. You'd go from 21 to 20. You hit that 20-mil floor, and you stop, and you can't go below that, even though House Bill 920 is going to want to take you below there. It's going to stop you. And as a result, at that point, your, your revenue will start to grow as a result of, of these kinds of things that I'm talking about, which is why in school districts around the state who hit the 20-mil floor will all pursue emergency levies, dollar-based levies, because all of those kinds of levies do not count as part of the, the calculation that goes into whether you're at the 20-mil floor or not. It's on a separate side of the ledger. Does that, does that make sense? Does that help clarify some of this? Because you have both types of levies. You have emergency levies on this side of the ledger, and you have the operating current expense levies on the other side of the ledger, and those count toward the 20-mil floor.
So if your house evaluation goes up?
Yes.
So the county assesses your, your house is now, instead of $100,000 to $120,000, we're not going to get that little percentage of kick-up, right, of taxes? It's going to stay whatever that was voted on at the time. So it was 4.0, it's 4.0, it's not going to change. You don't get an increase because your valuation went up.
Their taxes aren't going to go higher, and you're not going to get more revenue if their price went from 100 to 120.
No, Jake, it's the dollar.
Unless you're at the, unless you're at the 20-mil floor.
But we do get the inside millage.
You get, yeah, right. And so you, and if you hit, if you get to the 20-mil floor, now you start to, you start to get all of it.
About what you just asked.
But, but you do get inside millage. So, so yes. As it, as it applies to my hypothetical example of the four-mil levy, then you wouldn't see any additional revenue from that in the abstract. But, but as Sean points out, you have 5.1 inside mils, and, and you do get growth in revenue from that 5.1 inside millage when property values do go up.
Okay. Why have a question that bounds off of what he said? So I'll just use my home as an example.
Yeah.
When they reevaluated in 2020, it went up 46%.
Wow.
So what happened to, to that money since we don't get it? Where does that money go? That's what people want to know. Why are, why did my house go up so much? And you're not getting, you're telling me you're not getting any more money. Where's my money going?
Well, you're...
I understand we pay it to the county, and then they decide where it goes. So where's it go?
Well, the money, the increase in taxes that, well, it's a couple of responses there. You know, one, your taxes went up, I'm sorry, your value went up 48%.
46%.
46% is what the value went up. So you're not paying 46% more in taxes. Why? Because, even though the value went up 46%, you're not paying 46% more in taxes because House Bill 920 is helping to keep that in check to some extent. As Sean pointed out, you are going to receive some increase in your taxation because you got that inside millage that you got to worry about, right, Sean?
It went up like 20% in the tax.
I'm sorry.
It went up like 20% in the taxes. So...
So the difference there, the 46% versus the 20%, there's your House Bill 920, kicking, helping to...
So we are, while I'm asking is...
Where's the 20% goes, what he's asking? Yeah.
Is, because people say, you're claiming that you're not getting any more money, but my, but I am paying more each year in taxes. So where does this money go?
Yeah.
If we're still collecting the same, and it's hard to explain inside millage and all that, but...
Yeah. Yeah.
That, that money is being collected from the taxpayer. So where does that extra money go?
Yeah. So your values went up 46%. You paid 20% more. Where's the money, where's that 20% go? Some of it, some of it does go to the school district because of the, what Sean pointed out. You got, you got the inside millage piece of this. And then there are other, other political subdivisions that, that the money goes to as well.
Like local governments, you know, your city government?
A lot of overlapping.
There's the city, the county.
The city, the county, parks, anything like that.
Library, nature parks.
Do you know what the breakdown is of that 20% would be?
Um, I, I would have to get...
Are we getting 5%?
Yeah. I'd have to get back to you on that. Yeah. I have it in a binder right over there, but it would take, take a little while to get it out of that binder. But yes. I'm sorry, Charlie, we're going to answer...
My one, because I, I've always answered the question, really, the bulk of it goes to Cuyahoga County and goes to their general fund. I know that's not 100% right, but it's probably the easiest way to ask, to answer it. Does House Bill 920 apply to Tri-C and the metro parks, or is it only school districts?
Any, any voted levy, right?
So they're not really getting any more money either?
Yeah.
Because that is, that's a very common question for presidents.
Okay. You're telling me, House Bill 920, you're not getting any more money, but I'm paying 200 more dollars. So tell me where that went.
But there's 10, 10 mils of inside millage. We get 5.1 of that 10 mils. Some of it goes to the county, some goes to cities, some goes to the library, some goes to the metro parks, and probably Tri-C.
And you know what? And I think, you know, if you give me 20 seconds, I bet you I could find it. Probably find it real quick.
Sure.
CSD.
If I jump in with observation?
Yeah, please do. I'm going to DT 515.
Sorry, I thought I would just add, while Rick's looking, that in some ways, we talk about the difference between the effective rate and the nominal rate, knowing it's that money. That's the whole point of House Bill 920, is to ensure that inflation doesn't, can result and run away higher taxes. So at some level, the answer is no one is getting that money. It's just simply that rates are being adjusted downward on an effective basis to ensure that taxpayers aren't paying more and more for what is in essence inflationary growth. As opposed to, you put a big deck on your house, you've created something new for the duplicate, as opposed to what we're in right now, which is a housing market that's out of control, and values are just rising. That's the gist of it. But I think the issue is, though, that people look at their tax bills, and the tax bills indeed went up.
Yes.
And went up multiple hundreds of dollars. So that's what they're asking.
Yeah. And so they're always wondering, like, okay, I am paying more than I did last year.
Yeah.
Where is this going if you're not getting it?
Yeah. And your point back to that there's not just your inside millage, but there's even more inside millage for other entities. And all who have inside millage, which isn't subject to House Bill 920 reduction, those are going to go up proportionally with whatever valuation increases you have.
Yeah. Let me say, let me say it a different way, like reference the bond...
Yeah, let me say, let me say it a different way, like, reference the bond. So what they're saying is basically, is that people would say, like, well, we're not, we're already giving you so much, every time we've increased, we give this, and this, and this, and this, like, they think that we're getting rich off of the tax increases. So that's what they're just trying to clarify for people watching, or that might watch later, is that, that's not the case. Like, it, just because our taxes are going up, does not mean that we're benefiting from that.
Yeah, it's a whole stratification of overlapping subdivisions, and then within each overlapping subdivision, a variety of different kinds of levies that have different kind of outcomes like Rick is describing. So yeah, you're, you're sharing.
Now, I...
Did you find a Rick?
I have, I have a question. Since we pay the money to the county, and then the county has to divide it up, and they readjust everybody's value. If an area, their property val, if, if that area was depressed, and it actually went down while ours went up, their millage would go down or go up, because they need to still collect the same amount of money. So would we be, in essence, subsidizing a community that's going down if we're going up?
Shouldn't be.
So how do they get, how would they collect that money if their, if their property values are declining? You know, so, but they still have to collect the same amount of money based on House Bill 920?
They raise their millage.
Yeah, they raise their millage, but where do they get that money if they're, if, since they can't raise their taxes?
They'll pay a higher amount of taxes too.
That's what, they'll raise their taxes in a depressed community?
Yeah, just in the same way 920 can take you down, it can take you up, but remember, it can only take you up to what the voters have voted. So the, the limit of the upward effect of a decline would be whatever the voted rate is. So if your four has turned into a two, to use Rick's example, if you suddenly saw devaluation, it could climb, but only back up to four.
Right.
And then it has to stop.
Right, right.
Okay, so just, and just for clarification, so if the, so we, taxes go up, voters have only voted for X amount of mils, right?
X amount of money.
Oh, X amount of money. So there's a lot of people that are under the belief that even if they haven't voted for a new levy or a new whatever, that it just automatically happens, and that's not the case, correct? Like, other than the inside mil, millage, but, um, yeah, that was, that's a conversation they've had a bunch of times.
Yeah, and it very much, and I'll turn back over to Rick, it very much depends on the type of levy. I mean, your emergency levies by definition are fixed dollar, and so they never change. The only thing that happens if your value goes up is the millage goes down to produce the same amount of money. Your inside millage will grow, your voted, other voted operating expenses are subjected to 920 and probably level out absent real growth. So it's, it's a series of stratifications among subdivisions, and then, as you're pointing out, even within your own array of levies, there's different treatment depending on the levy.
Right.
So such as somebody on a fixed income doesn't get any more income in, but inflation has affected their lifestyle, such as a district, right? Their income is still the same because we've, we're not getting, but we're also affected by the inflation and all that. So we're still operating at this amount even though we've had no new money coming in.
Yes, that's the lament of the Ohio school funding system, I think.
You put it extremely well.
Yeah, all right, this is on tape, good. But, thank you, Mike. The, the answer to the question, where does, who else has the inside millage, and where does it, where does it go? And answer the county, they have 1.1 mils for general fund, 3.35 for debt service, and then the metro parks has .05. That totals 1.5 mils. And then you got 5.1, and then the, it looks like they have, this is the, I'm reading from the State Division of Tax Equalization Form 515. And there's, Parma City is an overlapper. I know you have other overlappers, but I drew the Parma City one. That's .3 for fireman's fund, 2.8 for general fund, .3 for police pension is what this says on the sheet, and that totals 3.4, 3.4. So the 3.4 plus the 5.1 plus the 1.5 ought to equal 10. I think, so there's your, there's the, how it gets divvied up, and these, this nifty form, DT 515, not only shows what I just described, but also shows for each individual specific levy, what the House Bill 920 reduction factor is, and what the resulting effective millage is for each levy or bucket of levies. So that's right up here, if you wanna take a look at it.
Thank you. So Rick, homeowners always complain when they get their tax bill that, well, 66% of our, my taxes goes to the school. Why we pay you so much? And I would say the answer is, cities are funded by income tax most of the time, and counties are funded by sales tax. Is that correct?
Yes, in general, yeah. There's a lot of sources of non-tax revenues and those kinds of things that, that come in, but as a general matter, that's, that's largely how these different political, political subdivisions get funded, yes. That's right. That said, you know, do, do property taxes go to, to these overlapping political subdivisions? Yes, they do, yeah.
And I just had one, one other thing before we move on to the next subject.
Sure.
The homestead rollback.
Yes.
I've heard a lot of concern from seniors that they'll lose their homestead exemption or any of, any of those breaks if there's new taxes. Can you explain how the homestead rollback and how that works and what it affects it, please?
Yeah. Any, any additional tax that you guys would approve to, to go to the voters would not get homestead and rollback with those subsidies at this point. Any new, any additional taxes. Now, as, as mentioned, any of the renewals of your existing emergency levies, you know, Sean has pointed out, for instance, that you do have those kinds of state subsidies associated with the $7.6 million emergency levy. You wouldn't lose those if you were to just renew that levy. Those would continue on, whether you renew it for five years, whether you renew it for 10 years, whatever the duration of the renewal tax is. You don't lose those state subsidies if you already have them in place. If you're trying to get new, new money passed, new, new dollars from an emergency levy or otherwise, those state subsidies are gone. Homestead and rollback are not available to you. It would have to be a renewal of a levy that already gets it.
So it's only gone on the new levy, but does it still apply to the old ones, or does it kill all of them?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And Mike and I had a conference call earlier today with another client on that very question. And it was, when, when the law first changed, we, we thought that was, the question was up for grabs, and we went down to the state government and got, got a written opinion from them saying that it, that they would, they would treat the two levies as separate levies for state tax, for, for tax purposes. And so the renewal levy, they would treat as, as one levy, continuing to get homestead and rollback. You wouldn't lose it, but the add-on piece would not get it. You wouldn't blow, blow everything up, and you'd get nothing. No homestead, no rollback if you were to add a, a piece to a, to a renewal, if you were to renew it.
I'm sorry. One more.
Yeah.
When, if you do the two, if we were to say we did the, combined the two emergency levies?
Yes.
And did a substitute levy to try to capture any future?
Right.
Revenue?
Yeah.
Would that affect the homestead rollback?
This is, this is great, this is like a, this is a law school exam. I love, I love this, but, but I would have my, my colleague, my partner, Mike Sharp, to thank for this. He, he thought about that when he wrote the legislation, and, and it's actually in the law, 5705.199 and other related provisions, that still gives you the, the homestead and rollback even if you do a substitute, is the answer to that. So it would be just like a renewal of an emergency levy for that purpose.
So only brand-new money would affect the homestead?
That's correct.
Can you, one more time, say the year? So anything after what year?
2013.
September, yeah, it's like in, September 13?
2013?
Yeah, anything after...
Originally passed.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, yep. And so Sean, you just mentioned that the $7.6 million emergency levy qualifies because it was first passed before that, that magic date. Do all the other ones?
All four of them do.
All four of them do, so, so there you go.
That's everything.
All four of them qualify for the homestead rollback?
All four of them qualify for homestead and rollback because they were first approved by the voters before the magical date of September 2013.
It's because we haven't had new money since 2011.
I'll make it easy.
Well, that answers that question.
If a substitute levy is offered and passed?
Yeah.
How does that ballot language look the next time it comes due? Is it still called a substitute levy, or is it?
Wouldn't it be permanent renewal?
Considered?
Wouldn't it be permanent?
Yeah, so I, I looked to Mike because that situation, I think, has only arisen once or twice that I know of, because most of the school districts who use the substitute levy will put it on for a continuing period of time, and so it never comes up for renewal. I could've sworn, though, Mike, did we have an experience with a school district that had that situation where they did a five-year or 10-year substitute levy, and then there was this, this very good question? Do you recall how that came out? Because I didn't, I wasn't overseeing that.
Yeah, very rare.
They're, yeah.
Because that's one of the primary reasons, as you said, to have that levy. I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, so you stumped us, and we'll, we'll get, we'll get back to you on that. Again, it's a, it's a rare instance, but it's, but it's possible. And I recall there was, there was a situation where we, we had to wonder whether we needed to amend the legislation. I think we had to amend the legislation, and I don't know if that got over the goal line or not, but it's a, it's a, it's a very good question, and we'll, we'll get back to you on that.
Well, I just, I'm wondering, because there's the possibility that you could do that without it being continuing, because sometimes?
Yes.
People don't like to do that.
Yeah, right.
And it's, it's a challenge, and so I'm just wondering if it comes up again?
Right.
How's that look?
No, that's, that's good.
I think Mark has a question.
Yeah, because I'm a little confused. So if you combine the two emergencies into a substitute?
Yes.
Would they become permanent, or are they still have to be renewed every so many years?
Yeah, that's the, that's up to you. That's, and so you could do it for a continuing period of time, should you choose. That's an element of the substitute levy that does not exist for emergency levies. You're capped at 10 years. But if you chose, you could, you could have a 10-year substitute levy if you want, and then we, we hit the question that was astutely asked. All right, what does the ballot look like upon a renewal of a substitute? You know, where, where does that stand legislatively? And so you can choose.
I'm just wondering if doing that would affect the 20 mil floor?
No, emergency levies do not.
Emergency levies and substitute levies also are treated like emergency levies for purposes of the 20 mil floor calculation. Good, another good nuance, yes.
All right, so, are we good now?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, all right.
So, so we know we're stuck with this property taxes to fund schools at this moment.
Yes.
And even though it's been voted as unconstitutional, but there's no movement down in the state to fix that, right? I'm assuming, so we have to come forth to do it this way, a property tax. Or we come to Part B, which is, you know, on your schedule here, is income tax. Do you wanna explain how that might work versus the property tax?
Sure. I was asked to address the income, school district income tax, and happy to get, to get into it, and, and to talk about Ohio's experience with it, Ohio school districts' experience with it. So school districts can impose an income tax, not on those who come into Parma, CSD borders and, and work. And you tax that, that income, you're taxing the residents, the income of residents, and that's an important thing to lead with. Unlike, say, a municipal income tax, like, you know, I used to live in Rocky River, live in Cleveland now, but I used to work in Cleveland, live in Rocky River, and, you know, I, I would pay income taxes to Cleveland, even though I didn't live there. The school district income tax is, is different, it taxes the residents of Parma CSD, so that's one important point. What's the tax base used? Well, you get to choose that, and I have that listed on the page there. There's the traditional tax base, which is basically Ohio adjusted gross income, includes, it includes passive income as well. But there's also an earned income tax base that, that you guys could select, and that would exclude passive income, it'd be earned only, and that's, that's, that's of benefit to those unfixed incomes. And so a lot of school districts will, these days, will, and I have a list of those who have selected the, the earned income-only base primarily for that reason, it doesn't tax passive income, it's earned income only, so those are, those are the two different tax bases. So a, I'm sorry, yes.
Can you, one more, one more time, talk about what is, what is passive? So that would be like social security?
Yes.
So earned income means you went to work, you get a paycheck?
Right.
Investments as well? Okay, thank you.
Yes, so, and here's a neat, neat little thing by the state government that they put out on school district income taxes. Earned income, earned income tax base includes only employee compensation and net earnings from self-employment to the extent included in modified adjusted gross income. So, and then they actually have a neat little, it's a, it's like a guide, it's, they update it every year, I have it over there, that really gets into the weeds on this, but at a higher level, it's, it's basically earned only versus basically everything that you would put in Ohio adjusted gross income AGI.
Traditional includes the earned income.
It does.
Okay.
Everything.
But you could...
It's all of it.
You could choose just to do earned income?
That's correct.
If you didn't wanna touch those other entities?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You got it, you got it.
What were some of the, you said some of the municipalities that did that, or some of the, who, who are they, and what are the rates that they, like, you had, you said some of the people have...
What systems use this?
Yeah, well, you have used it, and when, how much are they taxing them on income?
Oh, the, the school districts, you mean?
Yeah.
Around the state?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, so, all right, so that, I have a sheet here. As of January 1, these are all the school districts around the state that have put a school district income tax before the voters and had it approved. There's a lot on the list. However, there are zero, as far as I can tell, in Cuyahoga County. Zero, as far as I can tell, in Franklin County. There is one, yeah, and a smidgen more Norton Schools in Summit County has a, a .5% income tax, and Northwest Local, which is in Stark Summit and Wayne, also has a 1%. But effectively, there's just one in Summit County, and that's Norton Schools. So most of the school districts that are, that are on these lists, I won't go through them county by county, but suffice it to say that the, you'll find school district income taxes imposed in more exurban slash rural areas where you might have a property-rich income tax poor, if you will, not poor, but, but there might be an overemphasis on property wealth. And, and so to, to try to more fairly deal with that situation, school boards in, in exurban and rural counties will, will often seek and obtain income taxes. So you don't see much, many, you see zero in Cuyahoga County, and essentially one in Summit County, zero in Franklin County, a couple in Hamilton. So that, that's the experience kind of statewide, and that's the basic rationale, you know, behind it.
And what kind of tax rates?
I'm sorry.
What kind of tax rates are they charging the citizens?
What kinds of tax rates? Every, everything from a quarter percent up to, I see one point, just fly-specing it here, I see one and a quarter. I know they've gone up higher than one and a quarter. Here's a one and a half. So it goes down as low as, as a quarter percent, and here's a 2%. Amanda Clear Creek out of Fairfield County goes up to 2%.[1738.56] Amanda Clear Creek out of Fairfield County goes up to 2%. So I think that would define fly specking at the the high end of the range, yes. So from as low as a quarter percent up to 2%. And when you would put it on the ballot, it's in quarter percent increments. And so that's, you know, the closest, I guess, to, yeah, there was a Cuyahoga County district that sought an income tax a long time ago. I was sharing this with Mike earlier today. I think it was, I think it was Homestead Falls Schools back when I represented them, maybe 20 years ago. They they wanted to try to pass at the same time a property tax and an income tax on the thought that that would kind of share the burden among those two different categories. And and they put them on as separate ballot questions and they both failed miserably. I recall because the those who voted no voted no on everything and those who voted yes split their votes. And so they both they both went down, is my recollection. But that's as close to Cuyahoga County. Mike, have you done any school district income taxes in Cuyahoga County? No, it's a it's very rare. But it's, you know, we're talking about theoretical possibilities, options, pros and cons, and also the experience of others. So it's all relevant to the discussion.
It seems to assume that most of those counties that do that, or I should say, areas that do that are more agricultural-based.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why, because.
They are, yes.
Farmers would rather have their.
400 acres of not developable land because they're using it to grow food, so.
There you go.
Farmers would rather have their property because they own hundreds of acres, have it in their, I mean, their income tax.
I know the answer. Trying to give it for the public.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah.
What would happen, or how would we go about this? Say we put on an income tax on the ballot and it passed, do we, would we still try to pass the property tax ones or will we let it lapse? What would be the roadmap on that?
Yeah, it depends how much we would gain. Do you have any estimate of what a 1% income tax would generate?
I don't, that information is easily gotten and we could do that as a follow-up. There's a great individual down at the State Department of Taxation. He helped us out just recently with Cloverleaf Schools. He's moving forward with a renewal of a 0.75% school district income tax. And there's a guy down at the state and we say, hey, can you can you give us the spreadsheet that shows how many dollars are going to be raised for each percentage, for each category, for each tax base? So it's a spreadsheet that shows us, you know, all of that information and we could obtain that, you know, probably in a day or two. And we'll do that as a as a follow-up, just so you have it. It's easily gotten. And and so, you know, the the answer to your to your question is is multifaceted, I would say, because like Charlie said, we, you know, we'd kind of need to know, you know, how much we need and what that converts to in terms of a percentage rounded to the nearest quarter percent. So that's one piece of it. And and also, I think part of your question might be, well, what if we want to, you know, combine an income tax and a property tax? You know, would you have to do it as two separate questions or could you combine them into two, those two into one question, I should say? And the answer is you can combine the two into one question and that's precisely what Cloverleaf did 10 years ago and it got them out of fiscal emergency. And now that's up for renewal. That was a 10-year piece on both the income tax side of things and the property tax side of things. And now it's up for renewal.
That's my question.
Yes.
Is it a finite period of time or is it ongoing unless perhaps there's another ballot initiative that removes it at some point? Or how would that ever change?
The income tax?
Yes.
Yeah, the the income tax could go on for a continuing period of time or you could pick up any number of years or for a continuing period of time. So you're not limited to like, if for current expenses, it's five years or a continuing period of time. For emergency levies, as we mentioned, it's 10 years. But for a school district income tax for current expenses, you could you could go out for a continuing period of time or you could pick a certain number of years.
That would depend on our ballot language and.
Yes, you would you would make the call on that.
Can I just share, it was just a quick Google exercise, but wanted to see how we compared in income tax rates to the rest of Cuyahoga County. And two of our municipalities are in the top 15 subdivisions in Cuyahoga County. Parma at 2.5%, Parma Heights at 3%.
Ouch.
Mm-hmm.
What, in, you mean, in income tax?
In income tax.
Yeah, and add Rita to that.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Actually, Parma Heights is the highest in the county.
Wow.
So that's a factor?
But they have, they do have heated sidewalks, though.
Charlie with his Google.
Those snowflakes melt the second they hit the sidewalk.
And talking crosswalks.
All right. So I just addressed when I had combination possibilities there in item C, that's what I was referring to, is the combining the property tax and the income tax like Cloverleaf did and is in the process of renewing. So that that's kind of the gamut of of the options. Again, there's a lot of suboptions and and options that school districts really don't use and and all of that, and I'm happy to address any of those, but these are the these are the big ones, I would say. And again, because you're so close to the 20 mil floor, as I've discussed with with Sean and Charlie, you know, most school districts in this situation would would probably lean towards some sort of a dollar-based levy because of that fact that you're getting close to the 20 mil floor, for sure. And then the options are going to be, well, we were talking to another client earlier in a very similar circumstance. Do you do you try to get the the $7.6 million emergency levy renewed and get that done and then focus on additional operating money? Or do you try to get that done in one ballot attempt by renewing and increasing as one ballot question? Your existing $7.6 million emergency levy, you know, that's a that's an option that jumps off the page.
Of course, if you add an increase to a renewal and it fails, you lose your renewal. Scary.
And so so that's why, yeah, that's why we get into timing now. I think that's a good segue, a great segue, thank you, for getting into the Board of Elections deadlines and and ballot attempts. I put the the election deadline for this November's election and for the March election. So March of 20 of 2024, the renewal of the the $7.6 million emergency levy, you could you could go forward with that in this November, so that election deadline is relevant. And you can do it twice in 2024, which is the last year of the collection of that particular tax. You could do it in March and you can do it in November, it being a renewal of that particular levy. At that point, so you've got three elections left to renew that one. And if you don't renew it, to your point, within that time period after those three elections, then you, it's no longer a renewal. I mean, you could still go on in 2025. Yes, Charlie, I'm sorry.
If if the August election continues, which given the legislature's hijinks, we don't really know. I mean, it could be here this August, gone next August, but would we be able to go three times in '24?
Yeah, it would depend. So Charlie's point is a good one. Yeah, the August election was basically eliminated for school districts, but but now, you know, maybe not, you know? It's in, it's out. And and so we don't know, I guess, as to whether whether we'll be able to have a school district levy on the ballot in 2024. We'll see what the legislature does. But as as things stand right now, I think it's just the two, right? I don't think I don't think the current legislation has affected the school district's ability to go on in August. Yeah, it is not, yeah.
Thank you.
But they could they could they could change it, but good question.
So as it stands now, without any asking for any new money, we need to go to the ballot sometime either this year or next year for one emergency levy and then again in '26, '27 for the other emergency levy. So we'd have to go now and then two years later and then a new one in between, possibly.
Yeah, whenever.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, whenever you think you want to slot that in, that becomes, so you could go theoretically this year, I'm just, the options are many. Theoretically, you could go on the ballot this year for a renewal of that of that levy and then go on next year for new money and then go on in 20, I guess, 25, no, you'd have to wait a year. So you'd have to be 26, 27, like you pointed out, for a renewal of the other one. You could you could try to combine two of the emergency levies into into one. And again, no, no increase in taxes necessarily, just a straight renewal, but take care of two at once and and then focus on on new money either next year or the year after because then you wouldn't have to worry about that other renewal coming right down the street.
That's exactly what I was getting to, like, taking these two now.
Right.
So that they know we're not going to have to renew one two years from now.
Two years from now.
Two years is a different subject that we'll be talking about, not another renewal.
But the only way we could do that would be a substitute replacement, though, right? We couldn't do two straight renewals, not not in '24, because the window only opens, what, 18 months in advance?
Are you referring to the the $8 million one that last collected in '27?
The '24 and the '27, yeah.
Ah, good, another astute, yeah, this is great. So you could renew, combine for purposes of renewal both of those levies into one, straight renewal, as long as one of the levies is is basically up for renewal. So you get your foot, you get your foot in the door on one of them, you can add others into the into the mix. Yeah, but yes, the the point my colleague is making, though, is so.
It wouldn't be '27 anymore, it would be '24, so so both would be up again in '34.
Yes, you lose a couple of the voted years on the existing levy. So instead of maybe having it in place for 10 years, you have it in place for eight years. Yeah, and you just know that going in, you know, you're, yeah, so, you know, you give up a little, but what you gain is, you know, you got all of that, you don't have to worry about that other renewal. So there's a little give and take.
Yeah, and you gain some room on the ballot so you're not always seeing something on the ballot, another renewal or whatever.
But backlash after you pass something, especially if, you know, it's close, which we know it would be, you risk that renewal, the second renewal.
Right.
Because people say, well, I didn't vote for issue four, I'm mad it passed and now I'm going to go vote no. That's, I didn't realize that. That's that's actually very encouraging.
Yeah.
But it would be advantageous of the voters to pass renewals if they wanted to still enjoy the homestead, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If that goes down, then we definitely need new money and then that's going to take away.
Yes.
Yes, and yes. Yeah, so those renewals are very important. And, yep, no, that's that's well, well put. What else on that front? Yeah, we're past the May election. Yeah, there's a legal nuance, but the first time that you would do this is in November, so the legal nuance is irrelevant. I'm sorry, I was thinking out loud, so we're good. We're good on that front.
There was no May election either, by the way.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Manaw.
Yes.
Thank you for coming in.
Sure.
I hope that that clears up a lot of things for people in the public. It did for us, I know, and I appreciate you coming in. So if there is any last-minute questions anybody has.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sharp, too.
Yes, Mr. Sharp, I did look.
Yeah.
My bad, Mr. Sharp, thank you as well for coming in and, you know, sharing your expertise in this. So if we don't have any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Everybody, everybody's good for right now? All right, well, thank you very much and that's going to move us to adjournment.
Thank you.
Your last one was a grand slam, man. That's a walk-off. That's a walk-off.
Last presentation in 28 years.
Walk-off grand slam.
Very nice.
Thank you, everyone.
Best wishes to you.
Thanks. Thank you, thank you all.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharp, I'll come down in a second.
It's always a pleasure.
Thanks for coming in.
All right.
Air high.
Okay, all right, I'm going to move ahead, go ahead and move on while he's going down there. So I moved to adopt resolution 2023-05-226 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution to, excuse me, 2023-05-226. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradts.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned.